Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 6th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call Reverend Jody Moore for an invocation. Reverend Moore, thank you once again for being here with us this morning.
Thank you for having me. Let us go to God now in prayer. Dear God, you are the Creator of us all. You've given us this good land as our heritage and made this particular beautiful place on earth we call Dare County. We thank you for all the resources of our community, for our beautiful beaches and the wildlife that call the Outer Banks home. We thank you for the change of seasons, for the spring that is coming to bring forth new life, the pollen that we're starting to see on our cars and around us, and the new energy within ourselves and within your creation. You've entrusted us to be good stewards of all of those gifts, so may we take care of this earth that you've entrusted to your care. We pray for the beaches and the other natural areas and that we may plan for the long-term good of this area for generations to come. Thank you for all of the employees of Dare County who faithfully serve, especially those who are being recognized in this meeting today for their faithful service. Also, this meeting marks that March is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We pray for those who are the victims of this type of violence. May we, as a community, offer the support that brings healing and restoration to the victims of such assault. God, you are the one who brings hope and healing. You know our troubles and you hear our cries, and we pray for you to bring your hope to this broken world. We also pray, as the mission statement for Dare County states, may this community be a nurturing place where all can live and grow. Help the commissioners, county employees, and all those who work for the community's well-being pull together so that we can nurture one another in ways that help us to live and grow. Almighty God bless those who hold office on the Dare County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for each person who has been elected to serve for their dedication to our community and give them a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. For this meeting today, we ask for you, God, to guide the deliberations, help all who speak to demonstrate civility and respect, allow everyone to listen and carefully respect the opinions that are shared, and may all the decisions that are made promote justice, righteousness, and love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Moore. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of[549.12]
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. When you do, I'll recognize you. When you come to the podium, please state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that'll come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light up there that'll come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, please conclude your remarks.
On our sign-up sheet, first I have Lorraine Tillot.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Tillot.
Good morning, Mr. Woodard and members of the board. My name is Lorraine Tillot, and I live at 188 Old School House Road. I am a retired zoning administrator for Dare County after 25 years, and I truly enjoyed my tenure with the county. Haven't seen a lot of growth in the county, and a lot of growth has been handled wonderfully, and many people have thrived and worked in our community. Mr. Commissioners and members, the cluster home provisions of Section 2231 does not fit the scope and intent of our Wan Chee's Village Zoning District, which was adopted March the 24th, 2006, but changed to include the broad housing text amendment. The Board of Commissioners entrusted the members of the Wan Chee's community to create their own zoning ordinance to preserve our fishing village heritage, one single family, one home on one lot, with the provisions to conduct your own commercial business on your property. Our community trusted you to protect our zoning. Please do not betray our trust to protect our village and our way of life. Mr. Commissioners and honorable members, I ask that you do not approve the special use permit for the village on Old Wharf Road, and that you call a moratorium on the cluster home section 2232-1 to further study the implications of such high density to a residential zoning district. The cluster provisions are far too vague and will create and destroy communities. The quiet residential district at the north end of Roanoke Island is zoned R1, and that zone permits such cluster developments, and it will just completely change the lifestyle and everything that we do as a community, as a family community. We believe that there's other places in the county that these can be constructed and managed. And so, I just thank you for your time, and I would like to tell you that Wan Chee's loves their community. We're concerned, and in 1957, the members, men of our community bought our old school house that was constructed in 1922. Three members in 1957 went to the Board of Education in Raleigh and asked to purchase the building so that it would not run down and so we could use it. So since 1957, we have had our old schoolhouse community building, and it's the only schoolhouse in the whole state of North Carolina that is owned by the community. And we love our community. We named our streets one by one in 1985, when we were in charge by a county to name all the SR routes. And we love our community, and there's other communities that their people love. And we just ask that you protect it and just amend the text and give us back our ordinance the way that we diligently work to create it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tillot.
Next is Sandra Baril.
Welcome, Ms. Baril. Good morning. My name is Sandra Baril. I live at 154 Pine Road in Wan Chee's, and I have lived there for 45 years. I would like to read the 2009 Dare County Land Use Plan that the Board of Commissioners adopted in 2009. The future of Dare County officials have spent a great deal of time and effort in preparation of this latest version of the Dare County Land Use Plan. Considerable debate and discussion have gone into the development of these policies and the maps that will be used to guide the land use decisions over the course of the next several years. That was the statement. Wan Chee's, the population is almost entirely year-round residents in a residential development of single-family homes with strong ties to the commercial fishing, boating industries. All the development activity must contend with the limitations associated with the low elevations and poorly drained soil. The 60 houses, the size of single-wide mobile homes, on sites, 10 and 1/2 acres with retention ponds, no yards, swells in between the houses that are 20 feet apart with no green space for children to play, no overflow parking for guests, dumpsters at the end of the development, roads only 20 feet apart, which no fire truck can turn or maneuver, land that will not drain after a rainstorm, the main road entering and exiting the development on a blind, dangerous curve. The homes shown in this development only have one entrance in and one entrance out. If a fire broke out and a person would happen to be trapped, Wan Chee's is a volunteer fire department, which only has one volunteer that works in Wan Chee's during the day. Therefore, mania would assist, and they also are volunteers, which means it could take approximately 15 to 20 minutes for a fire truck to arrive, which could result in a tragedy. There is not an ambulance in Wan Chee's either. I ask the Board to vote no on this development and to look and review the cluster home ordinance that was approved in 2018. We are not against development in Wan Chee's, but this is not what Wan Chee's wants. We want single-family homes on 15,000 square feet lots. We want subdivisions that people can turn around and sell their homes and make a profit from them. They can't sell these. This is not what we were asking for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Ralph Baril.
Welcome, Mr. Baril.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Ralph Baril. I also live in Wan Chee's, 45 years with my wife. To give you a little bit of my background, I worked for the Town and Exhead for 38 years. 12 of those years, I was the Deputy Public Works Director. For nine of those years, I was the Public Works Director. So I have a little bit of a background in planning and planning out different developments. As I looked over this development, you will see some of the things that my wife pointed out, because actually, she was asking me, and I was pointing these things out to her. I sent some of these plans to some of my friends that I've made over the years and asked them to look at them. Asked them, what am I missing? What do you think of these plans? All of them came back and asked me, first question they asked me is, is this low-income housing? I told them, well, no. This is, they're calling it workforce housing. Well, most of them said, well, to us, this looks like Section 8 housing. Again, I said, well, all I can tell you is, this is what I've been told. I ask you to look at this development and ask yourselves, would I live in this development? Would I raise my family in this development? And now I even ask myself, would I want to see my grandchildren raised in this development? Every time it comes back to me is no. I think I understand the concept behind it. Workforce housing in this county has been a problem for years, not just 10 years, it's been here for a long time. So I understand the concept that you are trying to achieve, but I believe this one, under these guidelines and this ordinance, is going to come back and bite us. I really do. Everybody thinks, well, we're going to bring in more workers, and we're going to be able to keep the county going. But nobody asks, what else comes along with these workers? What about the crime that may come with it, the drugs that may come with it, and everything else? Everybody likes to point at the positives, but I never hear anybody say anything about any of the negatives. So again, I'm asking you to revisit this ordinance and take a hard look at it. Like I said, if you wanted to have a more populated area with smaller lot sizes, I understand that, but I don't think this is what this county wants or needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baril.
That's everyone who's signed up. Does anyone else like to speak this morning? Yes, sir, come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Michael Ruffer. I live on 4237.
I'm sorry, Michael what?
Michael Ruffer.
Okay.
I moved to Wan Chee's 12, 13 years ago, and I've been talking to my, I just wanted you all to reconsider your thoughts on this cluster home development. I've raised family, and I'm raising grandchildren in Wan Chee's right now. And after talking to my family, my friends, and a lot of my neighbors there, there's nobody who wants this in Wan Chee's. And I was asked if I could try to make this meeting, just so we could, you know, have one more person to let you know that we do not want these cluster homes in Wan Chee's, and maybe you will think about it and reconsider your thoughts on it. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other public comment this morning? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Nancy Silver, and I just want to, I've sent an email to y'all. We've worked really hard for years on this zoning plan. I've been down here 50 years, and I was here when Tootsie laid down in front of the bulldozer. And, you know, back then, people weren't really concerned about being sued or this or that. We just did what, you know, as a community, we thought we needed to do. And, you know, getting people, it's like herding cats in Wan Chee's to try to get people to agree, you know. When we started incorporating, nobody wanted to do that. But Wanky and Lorraine and a bunch of other people were really instrumental in getting people together to do this. So, just like Spence said, I just hope that you all reconsider what's happened here. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
How y'all doing? I'm John Crowe. I live on 81 Hickman Lane, Wan Chee's. I've been there since 2005, raised two daughters here. I just want to say I was opposed to the cluster homes. You know, I live off of Old Wharf. That's a lot of traffic on that road already. It's just Wan Chee's. I just feel like the cluster homes was going to fundamentally alter whatever Wan Chee's is or was, and not even be in a, you know, lifelong Wan Chee's, or I still know, you know, you put those homes in there, that's the end of Wan Chee's, as I know it, anywhere, anybody else. I don't know anybody in the community that is happy about this or wants it there. I mean, I know you, there needs to be some sort of housing for, you know, low income or worker housing, but I don't feel like that is the spot for it, per se. I mean, there must be some other areas in the county or, you know, I know NAG said they, I'm sure they don't want it manual, I'm sure nobody really wants 60 cluster homes plopped down right next to them. But I just think before you, you know, fundamentally alter Wan Chee's forever, that's, that's, I'm just saying, I'm opposed to it as someone who lives off of Old Wharf.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment this morning? Anyone else? Any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
That we would close the public comment, we'd move to item five on the agenda. This is the High and Dry LLC Group Development Special Use Permit, and Noah Gilam is here for that presentation.
Good morning, Noah. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Request for a special use permit for a group development for a storage warehouse has been submitted by Mr. John Canning of High and Dry LLC. The proposed development is located in Buxton and is identified as parcel 031013001 with the Dare County Tax Mapping Office. The parcel is zoned C3 Commercial. The C3 Commercial District allows for all uses in the C2 District. The C2 District allows for storage warehouses subject to special use permit review. The proposal will also be subject to the regulations of Section 2231 Group Developments because there will be more than one principal use on the property. The property currently has a 30-by-50 metal building, and the remaining vacant area of the property is used as a commercial storage yard for the storage of boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles. Mr. Canning is proposing to add a 4,000-square-foot addition to the existing 15-under-square-foot building and construct a second 1,000-square-foot structure. The structures will be divided into self-storage units ranging in size from 10-by-10 to 10-by-25. The larger structure will offer non-climate and climate-controlled units, with the smaller structure only having non-climate-controlled units. The site is currently accessed off of an existing 20-foot easement. The easement will need to be improved to a width of 20 foot. It's an entire length of a dust-free surface capable of carrying the weight of an emergency vehicle, or 75,000 pounds. A copy of the site plan has been reviewed by Steve Kovacs, the Dare County Fire Marshal, for his review. His comments are attached to the memo that's been provided, and conditions have been added to the draft SGP to reflect his comments. The proposed self-storage units shall not be occupied for dwelling, office space, or any other reasons occupied. Staff suggested the applicant provide a copy of the rental agreement that includes this prohibition. Security fencing around the commercial storage area of the property shall remain in place. Any lighting installed on the property shall be adjusted or shielded to prevent glare onto adjacent right-ofways or adjoining properties. Conditions have also been added to the special use permit to reflect these topics. The planning board reviewed this at their January 3 meeting. The conditions in the draft SGP and the site plan were identified by the planning board and recommended as reasonable and appropriate. Notice procedures for quasi-domicile uses established in Section 2272 of the Dare County zoning ordinance were implemented. And again, Mr. Canning is here to answer any questions that she might have.
County Manager.
I got one question for Noah before Mr. Canning comes up. With the conditions that are in the special use permit, does this development comply with all the terms and conditions of our zoning code?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Morning.
Morning. How are you?
Got a couple of questions for you. Do you consent to the entry of the file and all the data that Noah has in his file to the Board as evidence in this proceeding?
Yes.
All right. And then, do you agree and confirm the testimony that you just heard from Noah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, do you consent to and approve the terms and the conditions of the site plan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, County Manager. Anything else, Noah?
Yes, sir. I'm in Fire Marshal, and the Buxton Fire Chief have been on-site and Mr. Canning have gone over, you know, the improvements that need to be made to the easement to access the property. I believe you're also installing a power hydrant for his requirements.
Thank you, Noah. Any other questions by any Board member? Noah? Hearing none, then pleasure of the Board.
Chairman, I make a motion. I'm moving to approve Special Use Permit Number 1-2023, and associated site plan for the proposed storage warehouse group development be approved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Commissioner Cal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, that, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Proposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day, sir.
Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. This is a resolution from the U.S. Motto Action Committee, and Mr. Rick Lanier is here for that presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Lanier.
Good morning. Good to be in the good old historic Dare County. Got a lot of rich history here, and that dates all the way back to the founding of our great nation. It's my pleasure to come before you this morning, Honorable Commissioners, Chairman. This is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties that are voting yes to proudly and promptly display our national motto, "In God We Trust," in and on their governmental buildings and law enforcement vehicles. My name is Rick Lanier. I'm co-founder and field director for the U.S. Motto Action Committee. I served as county commissioner from 1998 to 2002, and in 2002, I led my Board of Commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the exterior of our governmental center, and since been added to our courthouse. Soon after that, several other surrounding cities and counties began to join us in doing the same. We formed the U.S. Motto Action Committee for the sole purpose to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials like yourself to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" in and on their governmental buildings. Displaying the motto gives ceremonial honor to public occasions and expresses confidence in our society. These words have been used on our U.S. currency since 1864, and this inspiring slogan is engraved above the South Entrance of the United States Senate Chamber, as well as above the Speaker's Seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. And I might add, while we're there, hopefully soon, in the North Carolina General Assembly, one of your representatives, Keith Kidwell, I presented to the Freedom Caucus on February the 15th, and we already have nearing 40 cosponsors for that, and several senators. And I have some pictures, if you'd like to see them this morning. On July 30th, 1956, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as the official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying our motto is a legal right protected by the First Amendment. On November the 1st, 2011, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, 396 to 9, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our national motto. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored a resolution in part because some of them mistakenly stated that "E Plura Basunum" is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages the placement of the motto "In and on" all governmental buildings from courthouses to school classrooms. A recent survey shows that 87% of all Americans still support the display of our national motto, and that rightly so. This is our nation's identity. This is the very basis for our form of government. John F. Kennedy stated the guiding principle and prayer of this nation has been, is now, and shall forever be, "In God We Trust." In times of both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. As a grassroots patriotic movement, the U.S. Motto Action Committee stands on solid legal ground. Since Davidson County paved the way, not one legal challenge has been raised against any city or county that have voted yes, and today, we have 68 counties and 50 town halls that have voted with over 275 displays of such throughout those counties and town halls. This effort is totally legal. There's nothing to challenge. And here's the best part of it, gentlemen, I sat where you sat, and watching our county budget and the dollars, 100% of the cost of this comes from private donations, in most cases, from your own local citizens. How often do you get something offered to you free of charge of this magnitude? All across our country, elected officials are quickly embracing the opportunity to display our great national motto. Displaying the motto will serve as a perpetual reminder of our rich, godly heritage as a country. Elected officials like you are showing a commitment to the values that our great country was founded upon, and I'd like to take this time for questions. And before I do, I would like to pass around the type of letter, the bigger one is for the exterior of the building, the smaller one, the acrylic, is for, like, chambers and such. I'm assuming that you have pictures of what we proposed for, on three different locations. If not, I have hard copies.
We had those sent.
You have these?
We had those sent, yes.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. And I'd like to take time to field any kind of questions you might have this morning.
At this point, Commissioners, do any of you have any questions of Mr. Lanier?
Yeah, who were the nine that voted no?
Mr. Lanier, did you hear Commissioner Ross?
I'm sorry.
He had a question.
Who were the nine that voted no, whatever it was, 60 years ago or something?
Nine?
You told us nine representatives voted no.
Oh, I'm sorry, in the U.S. House, I'm not sure.
Patriots all.
Anyone else have any questions?
On the list of the 68 counties, there's an aisle on the side that says completed or confirmed, or first phase complete, and I'm looking at, like, Chatham County says confirmation in 2016.
For some reason, I put it on there, we're very transparent, for some reason, the county manager there has not responded back, and it's been a few months since I contacted them, and so, that's the reason I put it on there that way, just so, you know, but they did vote to approve it. In fact, one of the members of our committee went and made that presentation, to you may know, former North Carolina Association of County Commissioners President, Fred McClure, he's on our executive committee.
And also, I see for Richmond County in 2016 as well, it says Phase 1 is complete.
I can't hear you good.
In Richmond County, which was also in 2016, it says that Phase 1 is complete. How many phases are there?
Well, they had requested to have it put on four or five different buildings. We put it on the courthouse and the justice center because those were the funds that came in, and we, Bladen County wanted it on 10 buildings, and we put it on two there. We tried to move forward as the funds are available for those areas.
Right. And those funds coming from, like you said, local businesses, I would assume?
Local businesses, individuals, churches.
And what, how does that go to getting advertised out to our businesses in our community that, is that something that we as a county would have to do, or is it something that you do?
No, sir. Although we will send a fundraising letter of sorts to ask people to share to the Board, if you will, if you all have a list of churches or businesses in the area, that's helpful. But we also, we have other contacts in the area that we send to chairmen of various parties and, you know, and groups as well. So that's our, that's our point of contact to raise the funds. But we haven't had any problem at all in this area. We have, I have, have one gentleman down in Harneck County, we got approved in Bertie and Pasquetank and Curtuck County back in October. He said, just sign me up for all three. I'll take care of it. So we have, we have other sources of donors as well, business people.
Anyone else have any questions? I believe you have a resolution you'd like to present, Mr. Lanier.
I sit over a resolution.
County Manager can, would you?
This is a resolution supporting the display of the national motto "In God We Trust" in a prominent location to be determined. Whereas "In God We Trust" became the United States' national motto on July 30th, 1956, shortly after our nation led the world through the trauma of World War II. And whereas "In God We Trust" has been used on United States currency since 1864. And whereas "In God We Trust" has been used on United States currency since 1864. And whereas this inspiring motto has been an integral part of United States society since its founding. And whereas the same inspiring slogan is engraved above the entrance to the Senate Chamber, as well as above the Speaker's deus in the House of Representatives. And whereas in both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. And whereas the National Anthem of the United States says, "And this be our motto, and God is our trust." And whereas the Declaration of Independence recognizes God, our Creator, as the source of our rights. And whereas in 2011, the United States House of Representatives passed House Concurrent Resolution 13, which reaffirmed "In God We Trust" as the official motto of the United States, and supported and encouraged the display of the national motto. And whereas a number of presidents have written or spoken about religion and God, with President John F. Kennedy stating the guiding principle and prayer of this nation has been, is now, and shall be, and shall ever be, "In God We Trust." And whereas the county desires to display this patriotic motto in a way to solemnize public occasions and express confidence in our society. Therefore, being resolved, the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare that the historic and patriotic words of our national motto, "In God We Trust," shall be prominently displayed in a location to be determined. This is the sixth day of March 2023.
To approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve, and it's been also seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
In the very last line, I would ask, we insert into the resolution, permanently and prominently displayed in a manner and, the two words, manner and, location to be determined.
Okay.
That's all.
I'm fine with that. Is the board fine with that?
Yes.
Amending the resolution? All right. Then those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Mr. Lanier?
Thank you, commissioners.
Look forward to working with you.
I'll be reaching out to county managers to proceed forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a proclamation for March 2023 as the National Senior Nutrition Program. I have a resolution here for that. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to read that?
Yes, sir, if you would, please.
Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. And whereas for more than five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas this year, Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March of Meals awareness campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered, have served our communities admirably for 51 years in North Carolina. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Dare County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also carry concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in North Carolina provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout Dare County that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in North Carolina provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for hundreds of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in North Carolina deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid COVID-19 pandemic, inclement weather, and other emergencies. And whereas the senior population is increasing substantially, and action is now needed to support local Meals on Wheels programs through state, federal, and local funding, volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. Now therefore, Dare County does hereby proclaim March 2023 as a month celebrating Meals on Wheels, and urges every community member to take this month to honor our senior nutrition programs, the individuals they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National March for Meals Celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. This is the sixth day of March 2023.
Thank you, county manager. Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, Commissioner House, to approve the proclamation, the 51st Annual March of Meals Month is March. Is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item eight on the agenda, Bronwyn Thornton and Stephanie Baker here to present a proclamation of Community Hope for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Good morning, ladies, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Woodard, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I believe in front of you, you have a sheet that looks like a quiz.
Do we have a quiz? I don't have a quiz.
I didn't study.
I'm actually good at quizzes.
All right, well, if not, it's a quiz with a lot of questions on it. I call it Hotline 101.
Can you ask us those?
Yeah.
Were they here? Okay, sorry. Sorry, I missed it?
Found it.
Where did you find it?
Put it on the last page.
Oh, got it.
Got it, okay.
I apologize.
I like to call that Hotline 101 because after all, we are more than just a thrift store. We're not going to go through all of it today. I'm going to concentrate just on the section specific to sexual assault, but I would love sometime to be able to come to a meeting and go through the entire quiz with commissioners.
Absolutely.
Hotline has been serving residents and visitors of the Outer Banks since. Anybody want to guess?
I'm gonna guess 63.
1980. In 1984, we opened our first thrift store. In 1996, we built our safe house. Domestic violence and sexual assault occur in low-income and minority communities only. Obviously, that is false. Domestic violence and sexual assault are equal opportunity offenses. They cross all age, racial, ethnic, gender, gender identity, and socioeconomic lines. They don't care if you are a lawyer, a nurse, a teacher, a construction worker, or if you live on the street. Someone is sexually assaulted in the United States every, anybody want to guess?
98 seconds.
Close. Every 68 seconds.
No.
The nine minutes? Every nine minutes, that victim's a child. Let that one sink in. Every 68 seconds in this someone, in this country, someone is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes, that victim's a child. How many of you have grandchildren, nieces, nephews, that are planning, going to college, planning on going to college? All right? In a 2020 nationwide survey, what percentage of college women reported experiencing unwanted sexual advances or abusive, violent dating behavior?
One in six.
Forty-three percent.
Wow.
That's almost one in two. Whose daughter is it? Whose granddaughter? Whose niece? Whose cousin? Whose sister? The statistics aren't pretty, but they're reality, and we need to have more and more conversations like this because sexual assault, just like domestic violence and human trafficking, thrives in silence. Our entire team at Hotline, from the thrift store volunteers to the advocates and the administrative team, are dedicated to our mission of promoting a safe and compassionate community. Many of us are survivors ourselves, and we believe that together, we can achieve our vision of Dare County being an inclusive community, free from violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Yeah, the statistics are really, really startling. They're very upsetting, and we are here, Hotline is here to help educate and help prevent further occurrences. Again, thank you for having us and allowing us to make this presentation. So April is nationally recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we're here to ask that it be named such in Dare County. Again, just like Bronwyn said, with these statistics, it doesn't stop across the border. It happens right here in our beautiful area. We're not immune from this violence. It happens to residents and visitors alike. It happens to men and women and children and young adults. The term "sexual assault" refers to sexual contact or behavior that occurs without explicit consent of the victim, but force doesn't always refer to physical pressure. Perpetrators can use emotional coercion, psychological force, or manipulation. Some perpetrators use threats, threats to force a victim to comply, threatening to hurt the victim or their family, or other intimidation tactics. Intimidation tactics do include stalking, social media tactics, and texting. Outer Banks Hotline is a member of the North Carolina Coalition Against Sexual Assault, which is an inclusive statewide alliance working to end sexual violence through education, advocacy, and legislation. We are also members of the Council for Women and Youth Involvement, which also works for these things. Hotline advocates, advocates and supports victims and survivors to help educate the community on the issues of interpersonal violence, including sexual assault, so we may help prevent someone from committing the act or from being the victim. Again, April, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and it falls in prom and graduation season. It marks the beginning of summer for all of us, especially the young people. Hotline would like to arm students with the information and skills they need to make good choices to protect themselves and others. The community at large can also benefit from this information year-round, but especially as this busy spring and summer season sets in. Traditionally, the number of victims we serve at Hotline is higher in the spring and the summer than it is in the fall and winter with the influx of visitors. Our awareness campaign, Community for Hope, is an inaugural campaign beginning April 1st and running through the month of April, and it will culminate in a live community event on Saturday, April 29, at Jockeys Ridge State Park in Nagshead, where participants will carry a teal ribbon four feet wide and over 60 yards in length up to the top of the dune for a ceremony to honor the victims and survivors of sexual assault. We'll return to the parking lot, and we will celebrate the efforts and the information shared. So for these reasons, we would ask, we hope, that it's your judgment to pass the following resolution to proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the county of Dare. I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas every 68 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted, every nine minutes, that American is a child, and the primary motive for sexual assault is for someone to establish and maintain power and control over another. Whereas, on average, there are 463,634 victims aged 12 or older in our country of rape and sexual assault each year. One out of, whereas, one out of every six American females and one in 33 American males have experienced an attempted or completed rape in their lifetime. Whereas sexual violence can have long-term effects on victims, increased suicidal depressive thoughts, increased drug use as compared to non-victims, and increased problems with interpersonal relationships with family, friends, and coworkers. Whereas North Carolina Coalition Against Sexual Assault, NC CASA, is an inclusive statewide alliance working to end sexual violence through education, advocacy, and legislation, and Outer Banks Hotline is a member of the NC CASA. Whereas Outer Banks Hotline is Dare County's only interpersonal violence crisis intervention and prevention agency, and seeks not only to support victims and survivors, but also educate the community on ways to encourage positive and healthy relationships. Now therefore, Dare County does hereby proclaim April 2023, excuse me, April 2023 to be recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, this sixth day of March 2023.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve this resolution by Commissioner House and Commissioner Bateman, and it's been seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion?
As per usual, I did have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It's for the two ladies. Obviously, you two are experts in this subject, and it's disheartening and dismaying to hear you read these statistics. In the next to the last whereas, you say that the alliance is working to end this violence. It's not a quiz, you don't have to look it up. Through education, advocacy, and legislation, do you feel, and this is kind of an opinion question, that the judicial system is adequately addressing those that violate or are convicted, such that a deterrent or a swift and sure justice system is moving predators off the streets and away from potential victims?
Absolutely not.
Well, I read that, and I didn't see that. I saw legislation, education, advocacy, but I did not see punishment or sentencing or, and again, this is coming on the heels of a national story where the District of Columbia attempted to basically eliminate punishment for criminals, and it was opposed both by the president and the Congress. Thank God they have control over that. So I was looking for that in the whereas, and it wasn't there. Comment?
Because it's not happening.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you so much, ladies, for what you've done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I left some information, too.
Okay.
We have one more thing after. It's going to be Outer Banks Men for Safe Relationships, and I'll send y'all, I'm not going to be asking for a proclamation, but it's a campaign running from May, Mother's Day to Father's Day, and I'm asking for leaders, male leaders, to help create more awareness and spread the word.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to listening to everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Bronwyn.
Item nine on the agenda is the annual report from the Older Adults Services Advisory Council, and Mary Pendle is here for that presentation.
Thanks, Mary. I'm sorry.
Mary.
Good morning. I'm Mary Pendle, chairman of the Dare County Older Adult Services Council, and this is Maggie Dennis, the co-chairman. We have 10 members. We have a staff representative from each of our centers, the Pheasant, the Baum Center, and the Virginia Tillett Center. We offer continued wellness and fitness classes, Medicare events, Meals on Wheels, art classes, gaming, bridge, bingo, Rummy Cube, just a few, the senior games, and travel trips are offered through the Virginia Tillett Community Center. And we review the centers for upkeep and continue to listen to our elderly community and their suggestions and needs. One of those needs is for the Baum Center. Several years ago, the van they had assigned to them was wrecked. It has never been replaced. It hasn't been requested to be replaced. We were told that we needed to show a need if we wanted to replace that van. So the center, I mean, the council decided that the way to do this was through a survey, mainly for the Baum Center, but we included all three centers. Maggie was in charge of that, so I'm going to turn that over to her.
Good morning. So you all received a memo that we addressed to you and to Tim White, who's the supervisor of public services. And in December of '22, Older Adult Advisory Council, with the input from all the community centers, created this survey and polled, and it was basically like Mary said, for the Thomas A. Baum Senior Center, and the results are as follows. It was a brief, four-question survey that was promoted by email, website, with the help of our Public Relations Department, and onsite on the centers as well. and onsite on the centers as well for the month of January 2023. So we had a good, almost full 30 days. Though the survey was created in response to the Northern Beaches Seniors, we decided that to include all the centers to see, you know, overall, just kind of as a control. The Survey Monkey was used to facilitate the process, and we received 342 responses with an overwhelming 84.88% that want a van dedicated to the Baum Center. So seniors would not have to drive themselves to an event or an outing location on their own, especially, you know, evening time if there's an event going on. So there were four very simple questions. You have them in front of you. One was, which senior center do you frequent most? The majority of people responded to Thomas A. Baum Senior Center. Second question was, would you be interested in a grouply month-day trip, noting that there may be a cost associated to that? And there was your overwhelming response right there. Yes, 84.88%, no, it was only 15%. Excuse me. Our third question was, if a van was available for trips, would you be more likely to participate in a day trip? Again, an overwhelming 83.98% said yes. 16% at no. And our last and final question was, if yes, what type of groups and events would you be interested in? We had 310 responses out of the 342. And we gave them, what was that, 246? About 15 choices, and the majority of them were for theaters and plays, museums, farmers' markets, out-of-town shopping. And I, you know, notice in having... I myself am a, what do I say, participant. I'm old enough to be a participant in the senior center, which Thomas Baum is more focused on, that these things are... You can see there's a definite need and want for that van. And it would be really helpful for them to be able to not have to be on that road, especially in the summertime. And we know how busy... It's already getting busy out there, and you see the construction on the roads. It's to be able to have that van available for them, to be able to do simple things like taking a day trip, you know, or going to see a play, which we don't, you know, have a lot of that stuff available to us. So we appreciate... And on behalf of the Elder Adult Advisory Council, we submit these findings and request a van for the Thomas A. Baum Senior Center, and ask that that allocation be included in the upcoming '23-'24 budget. And we do believe and wholeheartedly that the citizens of Dare County deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I'll ask the county manager to add that to an agenda item in our budget workshop.
Appreciate that.
So we'll have that conversation.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please? Just with back-of-the-napkin math, how many of participants do you think are mobility challenged? Not everybody can jump in a 12- or 15-passenger van.
No, and usually, they do provide their stepping stool, and there's walk, there you can not. But the van can also only hold, I believe, its 12 to 15. So it's one of these things that where the people sign up for it, kind of like they do the Virginia Tillet Center, is they will have signup sheets and people. And sometimes, if there's a big enough, then we might have to ask to see if there's another van available, or we just reschedule a second trip somewhere else. So that's part of the... That's part of the problem. Hasn't been too much of an issue, I don't think, with the Virginia Tillet van or Fessidin. They're still waiting on their newer van. They've had one in the past. And I think that that's... If we can just get to the point where we can get one, we can address the other issues as we go along.
Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Ross?
This is a clarification question. You said more than 80% of the 342 respondents said yeah, right? More than 80% of the 342 participants said yes, we would like a van. That's... I'm going to do some quick math. That's 250 people. How many passengers are in this van you're asking for?
It's 15.
15.
It's making the availability there for them.
Well, this is my pushback. I mean, okay, we got a van. Then we have, what, 140 people sitting on the curb on a waiting list?
But everybody's not going to sign up for the same trip.
But 250 said yes, and we got 15 seats available. I'm not opposing the van. I'm just asking, are we going to fix this? Are we going to create a whole new problem?
They seem to make it work at the Virginia Tillet Center, and I believe Sandy is really good at coordinating these things. So she's somebody that we will be looking towards to help guide us with that as well.
They make it work at the Fessidin as well. Let me ask you this. Is the current van that you have still...
There isn't one.
Oh, there isn't?
There is no van at all. Hasn't been for years.
Yeah, okay.
What brought this up is actually is we had a lot of the constituents come to us because they're having to drive all the way to Manio to utilize trips that are being done through the Virginia Tillet Center. And then, when you have people coming from Duck and Southern Shores, and you're going on an afternoon trip, and then it's getting to be evening, and these people are having to drive all the way back again, the seniors... I had an 85-year-old mother. I know what it's like when that happens, so...
County manager.
In answer to Commissioner Ross's question, 250 people would like to have a van, but 250 people don't attend an event. So we're getting event attendance in the 15 to 25 per event. It might not be the same 15 or 25 each time. So what's happened over here is the van capacity works out. We have some... Tim has some vans in other departments. When you have a larger event, if we schedule it and coordinate, then we can bring in multiple vans. And so what I would ask Tim to do is look at our... We've got some vans ordered. There was about, I think, a 24-month backlog to get a van. I mean, it was long. Wasn't that right, Dustin? And so we've got some that have been ordered for a while. We've got some that are in use. We'll look at our van inventory and see where we need vans and try to provide one.
That was my next question, because I know we have vans for Dare Travel.
So they don't all just go away. And so if we get new vans, then we'll allocate those.
All right, good. I'd like to see us solve the problem. That's why I don't want to...
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd just like to have one dedicated to them so that they can start, you know, creating scheduling, you know, things like that with the elderly.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you. Appreciate what you do. County manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item 10. This is a public hearing concerning the approval and execution and delivery of the contract and the county's financing for the 2023A projects. As a part of this plan, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution in February of 2023, meaning which authorized the county, one, to finance a portion of the projects, including the KDH facility of County EMS station in Southern Shores and the hangar. And these are collectively the 2023A projects. And pursue it to the contract in a principal amount not to exceed $49,250,000. And two, to grant a security interest in the Kill Devil Hills facility. Pursue it to the deed of trust for the benefit of the entity or its designs in providing funds to the county under the contract. We're required to have a public hearing with regard to this before we move forward. And so that public hearing is now open. The rules that we had for public comment apply. Would anybody like to speak to that issue? I have no signups and see no hands. And so is there any public hearing? Comment on this from Buxton? They're gone. So there's none in Buxton. With that said, we would close the public hearing, and we can move on to items 11 through 15, which...
I don't know if you need to do anything, but could we do 12 before 11?
We can do 12 before 11, yes. So if you'll present 12, and then we'll act on that, and we'll come back and...
All right. And, Cheryl, I'm sorry. I talked to Baum Council late Friday, and he said we'd be fine with the order, but it would be, quote, "better" to approve the projects and then approve the debt for the projects. So item number 12 is an update on the Dare Med Flight Project and the Southern Shores Project, and then the guaranteed maximum price and budget for the Kill Devil Hills EMS and fire station. The amounts we're showing you, as compared to what you saw on February 6th, are $404,000 less. The bids for Kill Devil Hills went pretty well for Barn Hill. I did leave out... I made a mistake on February 6th, and I left out the pre-construction fee. So where we really stand is $150,000 to the good as compared back to what you saw at your last meeting. For the Dare Med Flight Station, we increased the total by $107,000. That mainly came from water and sewer impact fees and other fees. We found out we needed propane tanks at the building, interior and exterior signage. We had assumed that the interior signage was included in the construction contract, which it was not. And then network and other wiring. Apparently, there's some additional wiring than what we anticipated because of all the systems in the building. Then for Southern Shores, the total increased by $186,000, again, from fees, adding propane tanks, interior signage, network wiring. And we've got to have a... We didn't anticipate any work to the permanent power there from Dominion, but there has to be some. Then the Kill Devil Hills EMS and fire station, the total budget's $24,652,000. As I said, that's about $444,000 less than what we showed you last time. The GMP with the recommended value engineering items is almost $1.3 million less than what you saw in February. The value engineering items are a deduct of $668,000 based on what the architect recommends we accept. The other budget increases came from the station alerting system installation fees. We found out in February, we didn't have the fire side of the station alerting system included, water and sewer fees, again, propane tanks and signage. In your packet, you have the budget sheet for all three of those projects. You've got the letter from Barn Hill Contracting on the subbid results and the value engineering options that Barn Hill presented. And then the page after that is the Oakley-Cogger analysis of those value engineering items and why they're recommending that we accept or reject each one of them. I inserted into your packet on, I think, last Monday, the Barn Hill change order. It's a change order to the original contract for the guaranteed maximum price for the Kill Devil Hills Station. And then the capital project amendment for everything that I just mentioned. Our remaining schedule is... The pre-construction meeting is tomorrow for Barn Hill. Kill Devil Hills will meet to approve the lease on March 12th. We're in front of the Local Government Commission for Approval Bond Issue on April 4th. The bond sale's on April 20th. And what's in your packet is wrong. The closing date is May 5th, not the 6th. So what we're asking the board to do is to adopt the amendment to the capital project ordinance and then authorize the county manager to execute the Barn Hill Contract Amendment Number Two for the guaranteed maximum price for the Kill Devil Hills project.
And as recommended by the CIP.
Right, the CIP.
Thank you.
I was going to say... Cap Improvement Committee met last week and went through all this in some detail and recommends approval.
Any discussions... Any questions from the board? Steve, I think your concerns were addressed.
Yes, they were.
And you got your answers on those?
Yes, I did.
Got you. That was with respect to some construction issues, and I appreciate that input, Steve. Anyone else? All right, those in favor of the... Need a motion. Excuse me. Pleasure of the board. Move to adopt the amendment to the capital project ordinance and to authorize county manager to execute the Barn Hill Contract Amendment Number Two for the GMP for the Kill Devil Hills project. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify for saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Okay, now back to item 11. Is the approving resolution for the bond issue. You've already adopted the initial resolution. You just held the public hearing. This is the final step to issue the debt. I provided a Google Drive link to you for all of the documents that you're being asked to approve. The resolution makes several findings, and they include that you've previously determined to finance the projects and capital improvement plan and grant a deed to trust on real property. It's best interest in the county to enter into the installment purchase contract with the Dare County Public Facilities Corporation and to enter a deed to trust, which pledges, as collateral, the Kill Devil Hills property that the county owns. The county will execute contract purchase in a letter of representations between Piper Sandler, who's the underwriter, and the Dare County Public Facilities Corporation. The documents that's been made available to you and what you're being asked to approve is the installment financing contract, the deed to trust, the indenture of trust, and the purchase contract and the letter of representations. The letter of representations is an exhibit to the purchase contract. You've been given a draft of the preliminary official statement, and you find it inappropriate form. You've held the public hearing, and that the county has filed an application with the Local Government Commission for Approval, which we have. Then the resolution resolves that all actions of the clerk, the manager, the finance director, and their designees are approved. The form and the terms and the content of the POS, and then the final offering statement are authorized, approved in firm. The underwriter can use those documents, and the county's authorized officers are authorized to deliver all those documents with such changes which shall to them be deemed necessary. And that the contract, the deed to trust...
Right.
Sorry. I want to get through... Sorry. The contract, the deed to trust, and the purchase contract with its letter of representations are all approved, and that the manager, the finance director, and the clerk, and their designees, so that... We just say that so that if one officer's out sick on the sale date or the closing date, somebody else can sign. But we're authorized and directed to execute all three of those documents, the contract, deed to trust, and purchase contract, with any changes which shall to them seem necessary. And that all the authorized officers are authorized to do such acts and things necessary to comply with the provisions of all three documents. Then finally, that each of the officers are designated as the county's representatives to act on behalf of the county with the transactions. And we're authorized to obtain an opinion from the county attorney and other such opinions for the documents. We're authorized to apply information for the preliminary official statement and the final official statement, and to do anything else and execute any other documents that are deemed necessary. The Public Facilities Corporation didn't meet, but they did adopt their resolution by what the attorneys call unanimous consent. So that has been executed. As I said, the application is on the Local Government Commission's agenda for April 4th, and we've got a meeting with them on the 16th. We've been assigned a sale date of April 20th. So you have the resolution that you're being asked to approve. I included the latest debt service number runs[1687.83] I included the latest debt service number runs and the financing calendar, and I want to say one thing before I ask you to approve the resolution. The debt service numbers run, we're looking to have proceeds of forty-three million, four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. Right now, the structure is that includes thirty-eight million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars of bonds, and then what we call original issue premium, where we actually sell the bonds for more than their par value. That's what the underwriter says the market wants. We will probably reduce that bond amount more. We're in a situation, we had a call last week, and nobody on the call between all the attorneys and the underwriters and the financial advisors had done this in over thirteen years, but when we borrow the money, the money goes to the trustee, and the trustee holds it. As we do construction, we get reimbursed for what we pay out of the trustee. So there's a good amount of money there that's going to be held for about fourteen months, and earning interest on that hasn't been a thing for the last thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years. It is a thing now. If we had priced the investment contract last week, we would have gotten five point one-three percent. There is an issue with that, is that the IRS says we're going to allow you to issue tax exempt debt, but we're not going to allow you to make money on that, you know, where you earn more in interest than you pay. But there are exceptions, and we think we can, well, we're very sure we can meet what's called the spin-down exception, where you spend a certain amount of the proceeds within six months or twelve months, and eighteen months and twenty-four months. So whatever that investment contract amount comes out to be, which will do April nineteenth, the day before the bond sale, we'll borrow that much less money and lower debt service by that much, too.
Got you.
So that'll be the only major change you see from this point on. So what we're asking you to do is to adopt the approving resolution for the bond issue for the projects.
Okay, pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House, been seconded by.
Second.
The vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Takes us to thirteen, I believe.
Yes, sir. This is more debt. These are two issues of debt that we issued requests for proposals for. The first one is a million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand over three years for vehicles and equipment that's in your operating budget. It's one for facilities maintenance, two vehicles for EMS, two for health, one for social services, one for recycling, one for mosquito control, one for parks and rec, thirteen sheriff cars, and three ambulances. We received eight bids from seven different bidders, a low of three point seven-five and a high of five point one-seven, and we're recommending the low of three point seven-five from Truist. The other financing are, was for, I'm sorry, over a term of fifty-nine months, for five garbage trucks, and then four different items that you had in the capital improvements plan, that you approved in the capital improvements plan. We do those at fifty-nine months because five years requires local government commission approval. It's not just us. But again, we had seven bids from six different bidders, low of three point seven-five and a high of five point one-oh-two, and we're recommending the low bid at, of three seven-five from Truist Bank. Both of those are non-callable, and we do not have an issue with doing a non-callable thirty-six-month and fifty-nine-month debt. As long as I've been here, we've retired one early one time, so.
So Dave, five trash trucks costs is two point two million.
Yes, the, the side loaders are about three hundred and ten thousand each. The front loaders are about three hundred and thirty-five thousand each.
Dave, are we still running behind on getting?
That's a good point. Normally, we do two or three a year, so the study you authorized last year for this year's budget, that's why we're doing five.
Okay.
That'll be a pretty big change from now on, and should catch us up.
Got you. Any other questions? Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
Do we need to authorize the county manager and finance? Do we need to expand that motion to allow them to?
Well, I think, was that, I believe that was part of the.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
To the forward finance and Truist Bank and authorize county manager to finance staff to execute all necessary financial documents.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Brings us to fourteen.
All right, item number fourteen is to close the construction budget for the two thousand and sixteen Buxton Beach Nurishment Project. We held it open this long because that project was a good amount under budget. We used that under budget towards the two thousand and twenty-two project, but as I just said, with interest on construction funds, it hasn't been an issue in the past, but with this one, we have two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five that we've earned more than what we budgeted. We do have an arbitrage calculation for this issue, and there's no liability, so what this amendment to the capital project ordinance does is to transfer two hundred and twenty-one thousand interest earnings back to the Beach Nurishment Fund, and it increases your Beach Nurishment Fund capacity by that much.
Move to adopt the amendment to the capital project ordinance.
All right, it's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Item fifteen.
Yes, sir. Item fifteen is for the school system. As you've been seeing with buildings, the school system has had a cost overrun. In their capital improvements program for this year, they had eighteen, eight hundred thousand for a replacement of a cooling tower at First Flight High School and an air handler at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. They did the bidding, and the price came in at one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand over budget. The good news is, and the schedules included in your packet, in the capital improvements plan and in the capital model, we did not include a draw from the lottery fund, which is specifically for schools, and we actually lowered the draws that we did. We did less than what we budgeted the two years prior. So at the end of last year, we had three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars available. There should be, there's another three hundred and thirty-eight thousand going in this year, so our recommendation was to draw the additional amount they needed out of that lottery money of the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and we should still have an ending balance of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, which this and any future projects is why we did that in the first place.
Great, thank you for the lot.
So we requested to adopt the, there's two things, a budget amendment for the Capital Investment Fund and an amendment to the Capital Project Ordinance for the CIP projects.
Move to adopt both.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt both. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Lot of work there. County manager?
Senator, item sixteen is a lease. This is a lease from Town Bank to Dare County. In conjunction with our Southern Shores EMS station project, we have to tear down the current EMS station in order to build a new one, and we had to have somewhere to dispatch from. Town Bank has a facility there on Juniper Trail that they've allowed us to use at no rent. We needed to do some repairs. We needed to fix some steps. We needed to bring some things to code, and we agreed to do that, and in return, they agreed to let us use it for a year during the term of the construction project, so we'll be dispatching in Southern Shores out of that area during the term, and this lease is there for your approval.
And do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask permission to write a letter thanking them.
Absolutely.
They were excellent, and I'll do that for your signature and send it to them to show our appreciation for what they did to help us out.
Absolutely, Dave. Thank you, thank you.
That brings us to item seventeen, and this is a lease agreement with the town of Killable Hills. This is in conjunction with the EMS fire station that we're building jointly on that site in Killable Hills. At the staff level, they have approved this and are on board with it. It goes to their board, I think, on the thirteenth. We're trying to get it all done in the month of March, so that when we go to the LGC in April, this is all done behind us, and also so that we can begin the demolition, because we can't really tear it down until we know we have the deal in place with them. So this lease is ready to go from our perspective and needs your approval.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
A motion's on the floor to approve by Vice Chairman Oberman.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then similarly for item eighteen, the Southern Shores EMS station and fire station is being built on property that's owned by the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department through a, they have a LLC that they've created to hold their land holdings in. That lease has been approved by the fire department and has been executed by the fire department, and it's there for you all to approve so that we can move forward there as well.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the ground lease agreement with Southern Shores Volunteer Fire. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
In item nineteen, that's a resolution to allow us to accept some additional funding from the opioid settlement. We've done this once before with the first round of settlements. This is the second round of settlements, and this essentially says we are approving the settlement on the same terms and conditions as the, as the last settlement that we did. There is one thing, it doesn't really reflect in the resolution, but as you recall, in the last settlement, we went around and around and around with the local council and trying to figure out what their attorney's fees are going to be. That's all been resolved in this one on the front end, so we don't have to go through all that again. There's some dollars coming off the top that are part of the overall settlement that'll cover that before it gets to us, and so by accepting this, we get the funds, and we don't have to worry about reimbursing anybody for attorney's fees.
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then item twenty is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, you have the Government Education Access Channels Committee proposed budget, you have the Cenaro EOCAB maintenance contract, you have a Kitty Hawk Elementary School field use agreement, the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services Public Health Opioid Settlement Funds Resolution. We have a resolution to name NCDOT ferries. We have a request for an addition to state-maintained secondary road in Swanview Drive in Collington. We have a cycle of media technology contract. We have the emergency medical helicopters, Sky Track Systems contract. We have the Motorola Solution Service Agreement, the Southern Disaster LLC bulk item pickup for the spring, and then the budget amendment for the dredge account interest.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then next are your board appointments. Your older adults services advisory council, they have reviewed and revised their bylaws and asked the board to approve them as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ross.
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Any concerns, questions of the motion? Any, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Virginia Estilluck Community Center Advisory Board, and Jonathan DeLucia is recommended to complete the term of PAN's offer.
Move to approve Jonathan DeLucia.
Motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve Jonathan DeLucia.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your ABC board. The ABC board recommended one of the following applications to fill our current vacancy. Pat Hudson, Don Twine Jr., and Michael Andrews. Applications have been received from Michael Andrews, Mark Balog, George Carver, Todd Glisold, Jeffrey Doughty, Pat Hudson, Chris Parker, Earl Sharon Jr., Olivia Spencer, Don Twine Jr., and Ambriant.
Recommend Donnie Twine Jr.
There's a motion on the floor by.
Second.
Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming board and committee appointments. In April, you have the Airport Authority, they have one term expiring, and the Mans Harbor Marina Commission with four terms expiring. In May, you have the Veterans Advisory Council with two terms expiring, and the zoning board of adjustments with two terms expiring. And then in June, you have the Hatters Community Center Board with three terms expiring, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with twelve terms expiring.
Twelve terms, county manager? Woo!
Yeah, that's when school gets out and you have student positions.
Ah, thank you.
The Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board is three terms expiring, the Library Board has three terms expiring, the Mans Harbor Community City Center Board has three terms expiring, the Roanoke Island Community Center Board has three terms expiring, the Transportation Advisory Board has one term expiring, and the Waterways Commission has three terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. Before we move into item twenty-two, I'd just like to state that I certainly appreciate the residents of Wine Cheese who were here this morning to speak at public comment. Thank them, and I appreciate y'all sitting through this rather lengthy meeting. I would like to clarify just a couple of things that were mentioned, and we will, one of the main reasons this was not on our agenda, and if you'll share this with your fellow citizens, and I've answered considerable number of emails with respects to why this was not on our agenda, is the fact that we are waiting for a transportation study from NCDOT to be presented to us before we put this on our agenda. And I wanted to make it very, 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 very clear that this is not, and I will repeat, not Section Eight housing. It is a proposal for market rate housing in that area. I'm not sure where the misconception comes from or how the, how the folks in Wine Cheese are misinformed about that, but this is not Section Eight housing, it's market rate housing. So with that being said, and one other thing I'd like to say, thank you to Dustin Peel who was here this morning, our one of the staffmen, a member of Hit of Projects. I want to thank Dustin for his expedition in helping Kitty Hawk with the amount of money that we've set aside to do some major renovations at Field House One and Field House Two in Kitty Hawk. And Dustin, thank you for following through with that and making sure this was done in a timely manner before baseball season starts. So thank you for your time with that. With that being said, it brings us to item twenty-two, Commissioner's business. County manager, I'll turn back to you if you have anything else to add.
I have two things. One is, we got a request from someone that wanted to purchase one of those lots behind the water park there in Rodanthe. We owe a bunch of that wetlands that we got, and somebody didn't pay their taxes, and we never, it's, some of it's wetlands, a lot of it's wetlands. I don't know if it's buildable, not buildable. It's shown on the tax records at a value of a hundred and nineteen thousand. I don't know if that means it's got some high land that some of the other lots don't have on it, or whether it's just misvalued. He's offered five, fifty-five hundred dollars for the lot. We've had similar offers in the past that we have not accepted, but I didn't know, I didn't need to bring it to you all. If we were interested in selling any of these lots, then we could say we would sell them if we, if they would have a wetlands delineation done to be sure they're not buildable. If we're selling a wetlands lot because somebody wants some buffer, then that's one thing. If we're selling a wetlands lot that somebody can make buildable, then they're going to get a steal at, you know, fifty-five hundred dollars. So, and I don't even know if we want to sell any of them at all, given, you know, the situation down there. We don't really know what the future holds, so. So I need to know whether just to, as I get these requests for those lots, for those lots, do I simply reject them, or do I, you need me to bring them to you each time, or do you want to proceed to try to sell some of them?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd be inclined to kind of hang on to them until a little bit smarter about what's going on.
I agree with the vice chairman.
Yep.
There's a lot of value given away, fifty-five hundred, I don't care.
So then going forward, as I get these types of offers for that property, those properties, then my response is going to be, we've had these in the past, and our board hasn't accepted them and leave it at that. If they sweeten it to something substantial, then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. The second thing is, we've had a couple of zoning violations that we need to resolve. One of them may have already been resolved, the other one has not. In order for, we're at a point now where the next step is for me to file suit, and to be, to file suit on behalf of the county, I have to have your permission to do that. So I need permission to file an enforcement action on, I'll call it the DeWeyon Matter. It's a travel trailer being used as a residence on a vacant lot. It's a travel trailer being used as a residence on a vacant lot. And also the George Hyde Matter, that one may have resolved itself, but if it has not, then I would need to file suit in that one as well to solve those two problems and need your approval to do that.
Two seconds of background.
Sure. On the one of them, I'll use the DeLeon because I'm more familiar with that one. Someone has a travel trailer on a vacant lot up on the north end and they're, they're living in it and there's no attack, well, you can't do that, it's in a residential zone. We have a travel trailer zone where you couldn't do that, but, and you couldn't live in it year-round even then. This person's living in it year-round, running a generator, bringing in water, the neighbors are complaining, and, and it violates the zoning ordinance, it violates some of the health department rules and so on. So, we've sent several letters asking them to stop that, they have not. We sent out a civil citation to them, which starts the clock running to, for them to pay fines by the day for not having complied with the zoning. I haven't gotten the service back yet on that to see that they've been served. Once we get that back, then the lawsuit is prepared, ready to go, and we'll file that lawsuit, assuming you authorize me to do that, to, to move it forward. And that would be the procedure in both of those cases.
Same, I think it's necessary.
I agree. So you need a motion?
I do. I make that motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner House to do so.
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager, I appreciate that. That brings us to Commissioner's business. Commissioner Couch, would you lead that off today, please?
We're getting busy down in, in Hatters, and I'm glad to see it. That's all I have.
Great, thank you very much.
I have been busy, but.
Great. Commissioner Ross, you're on deck, up, up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a mark your calendars rendition. March the nineteenth, coming up on Sunday at one o'clock, the St. Patrick's Day Parade will be on, going through Nag's Head at 1:00 P.M. Later, in April, on the sixth, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting an after-hours event for tours and introduction to the animal shelter, cosponsored with the SPCA. It's at 5:30 on April the sixth. It's going to be cool, the cats and, well, actually, all the cool cats and dogs will be there, so everyone would be welcome. On the twenty-fifth, the MedFlight crew at our hangar at the airport will be holding, that's a Saturday, March twenty-fifth, an open house to visit, tour, see, and ask questions about our MedFlight helicopter and system from ten to two P.M. And lastly, coming up soon, on the fourteenth of this month, March, at eleven-thirty, the Outer Banks Community Foundation, such a vital part of our community, will be holding its annual meeting at eleven-thirty A.M. and luncheon at Jeanette's Pier. Looking back for a moment, Commissioner Bateman, I think you're going to share a little bit...
He'll rub this in, guys, be ready, he'll rub this in. Go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Bateman and I took a swim with the polar plunge crew on February the twenty-fifth, I believe, or the ocean was around fifty-two or three degrees that day?
It was cold.
It was cold, but it was all in benefit Special Olympics, and again, I think you're going to have a couple of things to say, Commissioner Bateman, so I'll leave it at that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the polar plunge, I wish I could have been there, had a death in the family, so I was out of town. And Commissioner Bateman called me a chicken. I used to do that for a living, jump in the ocean when it was freezing.
You tell him.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll have that conversation.
So you've paid your dues.
I've paid, I've done that more than once. This past month, the Division of Marine Fisheries did have their, their quarterly meeting at first, first up, they were talking about the southern flounder. And they were considering, which they've already done, they've already closed the recreational seasons for flounders, they were considering closing, or not closing, but modifying the commercial industry, simply because the two areas that do still allow gill nets actually went over their, over their towel, which is the total allowable catch. However, the rest of the commercial industry was down about ten thousand seven hundred pounds. So during the course of the meeting, it was pointed out that even over the towel for the gill nets still did not exceed the total towel for the commercial series. So, once again, the commercial series was being challenged for the reduction, but it was clearly said that even with the, with the combination had not been exceeded, and they questioned the DMS interpretation of the Amendment Three of that part of the, the flounders. And the DMS did quickly respond, confirm that they did indeed correct, and that unless the final data showed a combined towel for the gear and area combinations has been exceeded, which is very unlikely, there will be no reduction in either the two thousand twenty-three towel or tack for the central and southern ponds of net fisheries for the flounder. So that's good news. Like I said, for the recreational series, they went almost fifty thousand pounds over their quota. So we can obviously see where the, the problems lay. So I wanted to get that out there. That was the main discussion of the whole meeting. Some of the other things that came up with some of the other fisheries, they're in the process of, of the scoping processes and trying to get a good feel for those. I'll update you on those later as we get more information on them. Our day in history, everybody heard of aspirin? Eighteen ninety-nine, Bayer patented aspirin, which is a German company. Now to find out a little bit more about that, I challenge you to read the history on aspirin, especially when it detains to World War One, and what has happened with it since. And also, do have our favorite part of any commissioner meeting, our pet of the week.
Our pet of the week this week is Miss Dale. Miss Dale was brought to us as a stray from Manio. She is roughly eleven years young and would love to be in a home, demanding your attention while snuggled in your lap. To adopt Miss Dale or foster one of our other animals, you can come visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter in Manio. For more information, visit our website at www.obxspca.org, or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please go down to the OBX SPCA and check out Miss Dale, and hopefully we can get her a forever home. And thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I ran into the executive director the other day, and he said we've done a little over three hundred. I think we funded, what, Commissioner Ross, a thousand, up to a thousand to be spaded a new. So, so we're about a third of the way there. So I thought that was...
That is accurate.
Vice chairman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. First of all, of course, I'd like to recognize Matt, Erica, and Cynthia for their fifty years of service to Dare County. Once again, can't do it without them. And our employee of the month, April. Had some really great folks in here today, really appreciate their years of service and their service to the county. Secondly, this past Saturday, attended a program at COA over here called Checkerboard Crews in Colored News, and it was a black history program primarily to do with the P. Island Lifesavers. There was a, a painting there that was presented by James Melvin. It was a colored, a, a, in color painting of the P. Island Lifesaver Crew, and it was, it was really, really something to see. But it was a really good program, and I'm sure they'll be doing these things periodically if you get a chance, try to get in to see them. I know several folks were going to do it, and it had to reschedule it, and there were some conflicts, but anyhow, nice program. Our folks did video that, thank Dorothy, and I'm sure that'll be on the county website for too much longer. Third thing is, there is a House bill that is coming forward, House Bill one ninety. That's a modification to the requirements for environmental health specialists, it's actually creating a new position, and I wanted to ask the board to support, see if we could get Maguire Woods to help support this. And, and the reason this is important, there's a shortage of environmental health specialists throughout the state, and by creating these new positions that don't require quite as much, doesn't require a bachelor's degree, it almost creates something like a, an internship to, to get qualifications to do certain parts of this job. So that kind of in a nutshell is it. Bobby can, can address some of the issues we've had hiring here in Dare County. I think we're two, two people short right now in that department, and, and they're working on overload right now. But Bobby, if you want to share some of that?
To be an environmental health specialist, under the current statute, there's a criteria you have to meet, an educational requirement, some science and biology requirements, majors, a number of things you have to do to even have, be able to apply and be interviewed for a job, and it's making it really difficult for us and other communities to hire these environmental health specialists. This legislation reduces those requirements some. There's still got to be a pretty significant science background, but not as significant as what we had, and the idea being hopefully that that will allow us to get more application so that we and others that are having similar problems can, can fill the spots that we have. The intern program would be a really good thing if people who don't have all the requirements could come in and do that, they could learn how to do it, how to do the inspections, how to do the measurements, all the things you have to do. And so we had our health department folks vet this, they're supportive of it, they think it will help them some. I think it's being supported in other places, and so it's before you for your support as well.
Okay.
And if we just get consensus on that, Bobby can go to Harry and get them to push.
Everybody in favor of that?
We're good.
Good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, vice chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. As you see on the monitor, a bunch of smiling folks there. We had the polar plunges, Commissioner Ross had pointed out, there were fifty-one people that plunged into the water, about eighty more on the beach that cheered everybody on, raised eleven thousand dollars, and the donations were still coming in. It was the best year ever, ever had. EMS department won a county department challenge, having the most employees on their team, and it was a great day for everybody, and just a super event, and for a fantastic cause, Special Olympics. Steve, I would just tell you that I didn't do it for a living, but it brought back memories when you said you did it for a living. March, about nineteen seventy, I was on my second date with my bride, been married forty, almost forty-nine years. And of course, I was there to impress, so I took my surfboard and paddled out and was riding the way back in, I just got bammed, I mean, just trashed underwater, come up, fifty yards down to the beach, undertow got me, I was still treading for water, and my wife was on the, just waving at me and all that. Fortunately, I made it to shore, but it wasn't pretty. So the ocean's nothing to mess with, believe me, y'all. Listen, I want to bring up and talk about the cluster home development. What I'd like for us to do, guys, I would like to send back to the planning board the ordinance concerning cluster homes for future developments. I know we cannot do anything with the standards based on what's going on in Wanchies now, but for future developments, I would like to look at wastewater standards for engineered systems, open space standards, stormwater management plan standards, traffic analysis standards for development for internal and exterior of the properties. I think that moving forward, this will make this ordinance the best it can possibly be by taking a second look at it, and I'd like y'all's support.
Comments from the board?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to taking another look at it to make things a little tighter.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think I, I wouldn't disagree with, with taking a second look at that.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't, I don't know that we need a motion to do this. I think we could just certainly go back to ask the county manager, go back to our planning department and our planning board and take a look at that.
Yeah, I would just add one thing, if I may, that in light of the items Commissioner Bateman listed, I don't disagree, we've had some conversations outside the meeting, and if possible, obtain any empirical data, excuse me, either from best practices in other communities, engineering studies, or engineering work that's been done regarding wastewater or stormwater runoff. What I'm driving at is to get as much objective evidence supporting the reexamination as possible. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
And, and let's, let's be clear, and I hope, hope this is your intent, Commissioner Bateman. Let's be clear that what was done prior was for all, and I, and I repeat, all of unincorporated Dare. This was not, this was not singling out Wanchies. So I, so my question to you is, with your request, you are referring to just that, is that correct? For all unincorporated?
All means, all means.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I, I don't think anyone anticipated a density like this, and it's, maybe that's something that's, that's looked hard at as part of this, but anyway, not a problem.
I, I agree, a hundred percent.
Okay, all right, fair enough, county manager, if you'll take care of that, going back to planning.
I'm just going to have them do a comprehensive look at all the issues, density setbacks, stormwater, all the things that are associated with this.
All, all of the above.
All right, anything else, Commissioner?
I'm done.
All right, thank you very much. Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us this morning?
Just one item, as part of your consent agenda, you approved the large item pickup contract. So we'll be announcing the date, the dates later today, because Public Works has that. It'll begin on March the twenty-seventh for all areas of unincorporated Dare County. It'll probably run twelve to fifteen days. We don't have exact dates for each specific area, because that's being left to the contractor, so the, the information we put out is going to advise everyone to have everything out by that first day, and then they'll move through as they see fit. I believe they're going to start on Hatters, but I don't, we, we don't know for sure, it's up to them, so.
It's a, it's a one pass?
Yeah, one pass, thank you, Bobby.
If it's there, there's not.
Yeah. If it's not there, they're not coming back.
Therefore, the messaging needs to be very clear and direct.
It is, it's, that's why it's hard to go through.
Six thousand out-of-area property owners down there.
Yes. So we've got very specific information, we've worked through with Shanna, we'll be getting that out this afternoon. I know a lot of people have been waiting to know when it was going to be, so we'll nail that down, it's nailed down already, and get the information out and send it to the realty companies and such. Mary Helen had asked as well.
And with, with respects to that, we always encourage our, our media that listen to our meetings every month to help us with that message. I mean, we make public announcements and stuff, so when they're reporting, you know, we always reach out to the media and ask them to help us with that messaging, so. Very good.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us today?
No, sir.
All right. With that being said, then we need a motion to adjourn until April the third at nine A.M.
Tentatively, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Some movement.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.